For this work-study meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 624, ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Esther, you, Thompson here, our Cam, Floyd, and Daniel.
You, Ellison. Here. All right, thank you. We'll move into our first discussion item, B1, the Northeast Metro 916 Intermediate School District Program Update. Miss Daniels.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce Valerie Ball. Valerie is the superintendent of our Central Nineteen, she's going to give us a full overview tonight of the services, which we've been a member of for over 50 years. We're so happy to have Indian Elementary School District to partner with and coordinate with, and she has a lot of great information she has to share tonight, and the timing.
Yeah, perfect timing.
And as the Assistant Superintendent of Specialized Services for Nineteen. So welcome, and thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you all very much. Thank you for the invitation. It is always our great honor and privilege to be able to present to school boards some of the programming and services that we provide to member districts or partner districts. So as Kathleen mentioned, White Bear Lake actually has been a member for over 54 years and was a founding partner. So Dan and I are grateful to be here and share some information.
Should work, sorry.
Okay.
With the test for me, and I failed it.
There you go, sorry.
No, that's okay, okay.
All right, so a little bit of background about intermediate districts. So 916 is one of four intermediates in the metro area. Collectively, we serve over 25,000 students across the metro. Intermediates are a collective of partner districts that form together to create unique programs and services based on the needs of the member districts. The four intermediate districts in the metro area are 287, 288, 916, and 917. And one of the really important features of an intermediate district is to really leverage the economies of scale through partnerships with the member districts. So this is a map of intermediate district 916 and the member districts that we serve. On the right, you can see the list of the member districts. There's 13 of them. The ones in the green that are highlighted are those six founding member districts or partner districts. This is really a high-level overview from our annual report. Every year, we do an annual report of our programs and services for our partner districts, and the information from the fiscal year '22 shows that we serve students, almost 5,000 students, most of them in our career and tech programs, followed by, or excuse me, ALCs, followed by career and tech, and then special education and care and treatment. At the bottom, I wanted to highlight the students that we serve in our home districts. That's through contracted services, and Dan will be sharing a little bit about that in a few slides. So professional services. So this is an area that's outside of educational services, and some of the things that we provide to our member districts, I have highlighted with asterisks all of the professional services that White Bear Lake takes part in. Some of these are no cost, many are low cost, and I'll highlight a few. So in the area of staff development, this year, we provided crisis management training to all of our member districts. The I Love You Guys Foundation came out three times. They came out once in the fall for a full day training, and again, twice in the spring in April, to provide crisis management training or standard response protocol to our intermediate district partners, as well as member district, other intermediate districts, and members of the community. Ramsey Coweney, Sheriff's Department, the Red Cross, all of the partners that we use in the community that support us when there is something that is a safety concern in schools. One of the other things that I wanted to highlight in terms of our educational networks, the SIN, our Collaborative Intervention Network, is specialized training for setting three teachers, and that is through our consultation team. And our consultation team, of course, are experts in the area of providing services to students with disabilities, and we'll be highlighting a little bit more about the consultation team in a little bit. I am going to jump to the consultation team. You see in that training and technical assistance, one of the things that we find very important to do and have had a lot of interest in from our member districts or partner districts is services from our consultation team. They help to build capacity through training and resources and specialized services to our member districts, and that is really critical to prevent referrals to setting four, so that students can remain in their home district. In the member district collaborations, the Laser Beach Consortium is workflow and digital imaging, and White Bear Lake is taking part in that. You are receiving those services through that collaborative at a lower cost than you would if you were to invest in it independently. Also, of course, you can see the joint purchasing. One of the things that is also very important is the security work that we do in partnership. The CISO collaboration, member districts receive 10 hours of free cybersecurity support through that collaboration. So and White Bear Lake is taking advantage of that as well. So just a high-level overview of some of the other professional services that we provide outside of the educational services. So I'm going to turn this slide over to Dan. It's really all about the special ed setting four and other areas we provide special education.
So one of our divisions is the Special Education Division, and we serve students ages two to 21. And there's four different ways in which we provide special education at 916. Probably the one that is most known is our Fed Setting Four Separate Site Special Education Program. So we have a number of sites, number of programs that serve only students with disabilities. Today, we have about 450 students enrolled in those programs, and that includes participation from all of our member districts. We also contract services to member districts, and I'll talk about that, I think, in the next slide in a little more detail. And then we provide special education at our care and treatment sites. So there's two care and treatment sites. One is located in Woodbury. It's a day treatment program, and one's located in Blaine, which is a residential treatment program. And we provide the educational services there at the request of our member district. So in those cases, it's South Washington County and Spring Lake Park. And then lastly, we provide special education at our alternative learning centers. We have three ALCs located across the metro. We have a couple of unique services that really came out of requests from our member districts and been around for a number of years now. One is called Project Return, which is an alternative to suspension and expulsion. So if you have a student who does something that requires some discipline, you can, for certain offenses, you can remove that student for up to 45 days. We create a program that has a restorative practices component with the intent of returning a student to the home district. So not only do they, can they be removed from the setting, but they also are staying up to date with their academics along with the restorative practice piece. And then we have the Intervention Consultation Team, which is a team of experts from 916 that can come in and assist our member districts, and either on individual student cases, so maybe a really challenging student, that may or may not be referred to 916, but sometimes it's helpful to have a different set of eyes look at a situation. So we have a team that will come out and provide consultation on individual students along with either larger-scale projects like classrooms or even building-wide services across the district. And we serve the top 3% of special education students in our member district. That varies from year to year, and I don't know if we have a slide later, I think, that highlights that. But we're around 3% of the total special education of the collective 13 in our district. All right, Special Contracted Services. So by sharing the resources, districts receive cost-effective service from highly-trained specialists. So we contract to our member districts, is last year's data, a little over 83 full-time FTEs to our member district, 83 people working in our 13-member districts, serving directly almost 500 students who are blind visually impaired or deaf hard of hearing. So we touch a lot of students across all of our member districts. The reason the service is valuable to our member districts is that with low incidence disabilities, it's a small number of students in each district, and sometimes those students will move, or they'll move out of state. And then if you hired those people yourself, then you'd be having to provide, you know, that remaining contract the remainder of year. What we do is look at what the needs are in each district. So we'll hire one person and contract them to many districts. That way, if a student leaves, oftentimes, they leave one district, like they might leave White Bear and enroll in Forest Lake. And if that is a student who's deaf hard of hearing, we can move that service provider to Forest Lake at their request. So it has more flexibility to meet the needs across our member districts. And also with these low incidence disabilities, you sometimes have a group of staff that are singletons or a very small group, and because we serve such a large number, we have a pretty good group that can rely on each other as colleagues.
Okay, all right. So starting last year, we looked at data and data trends because we know that it's very important to plan for the future, and our world is moving very quickly, and we wanted to take a look at metrics, our key metrics and data trends. Back to 2010 was when we first started collecting some data. And so this year, we established some key metrics moving forward that we want to pay attention to. So the next two slides are really created for our annual review of our Dr. Powers Agreement, which is the collective of our member districts. And so these are some of the key metrics that we're watching very closely. The first one is related to special education. So when our data systems analyst or coordinator took a look at what was the incidence of our collective 13-member districts, approximately 95,000 students that were qualifying for special education services in settings one and two, we are noting that there is a 1% increase on average across those 13-member districts. So that's something we're watching closely. We provide setting four services, but if there's an increase in setting one and two, we want to keep an eye on that. We're also watching a trend, an upper trend in career and tech services. That is, you'll see later in this presentation, the trend for White Bear Lake in services. And your trend is following the trend that we're seeing in career and tech enrollment. That's on the upswing. We're also looking at and watching and responding to the workforce shortage. And as you can see, the March 15th data, nearly, we've had a spike in unfilled teacher vacancies, and we're hoping to make that trend turn, have a downward turn here in the next few months, hopefully next year, because what that does is there's an impact then in providing services for our member districts in terms of referrals. So some other key metrics that we're looking at are the services that we provide to our member districts, the things that we send out to help build capacity in your programs, in your schools. So that services through our consultation team, that is some of the professional development that you have access to. And as you saw in the slide previous about the things that you're taking advantage of on White Bear Lake, you're taking advantage of consultation team, professional development, much of that professional development, the collaborative intervention is free, training core, setting three teachers, and then contracted services, which Dan just mentioned, and the FTE, we're watching a little bit of an upswing in those contracted services coming from across our member districts. So this is specific to White Bear Lake. So one of the things that we started taking a look at last year was how our member districts are using 916 services. And so this is a snapshot from, for White Bear Lake. And so we look at these snapshots from across our member districts, and what we see is every member district uses 916 services a little bit differently. So if you take that 95,000 students from across our 13-member districts, your portion of that is 9%. How you're using the services, it's broken down in this box, is special education, career and tech, the itinerant services, and then other services. You're kind of, you range in your, in the way you're asking for using those services across those categories. So it's just one way for us to take a look at how our services are used by district. The next is a trend line of your services over the course of time. And so you can see career and tech is that orange line. You can see it's back on the upswing again, as predicted in the 23, 24 school year in the fall. You're also seeing the special education trend line there, and of course, itinerant services, which is that blue line. And so you can see over time how you have trended in your usage of 916 services. Again, just information to provide for our member district superintendents, member district board members, our board member on the 916 school board as well. Something that we are watching is district leadership to make sure that we are responsive to the needs of our member districts. So this is another snapshot. I took this from the superintendent's dashboard, which again, your, our member district superintendents and board members have access to. This is updated daily, so you can see current enrollment by program. Today, you had 130 students enrolled in our 916 programs. About the same number this year. I checked the special education this year versus last year. Last year, there was, on the same date, there was 118 students enrolled across our programs. The jump was 12 students in career and tech. Special ed was the same this year compared to last year. I think there was one more student this year enrolled in special ed setting four than there was last year at the same date. So just a really interesting and helpful, hopefully, tool for our member districts to take a look at, to see where their enrollments are trending. The snapshot or the screenshot on the above is the consultation team services. So that kind of shows you the, how White Bear Lake engaged with our consultation team this year. There was 100% of those services completed, which was a total of four, but that's significant for those programs or students that were receiving the services and preventing, building capacity in White Bear Lake, and then also preventing referral to setting four. The goal is always to keep students in the least restrictive environment. And then the bottom snapshot is the itinerant services that White Bear Lake is currently contracting with through 916. And those are students, those are individuals that are serving students in your district. So the last slide related to the dashboard data is the percent enrollment by program. Sometimes this is just helpful to see in a different graphical way, how you, where your students are being served, and which programs. You can see the largest portion of those is our current tech center, followed by special education, and then in the ALCs in terms of enrollment by program. And that is as of today. Okay, back over to Dan.
All right. She asked me to talk about the Innovation Grant that we received, and it's the second round of the Innovation Grant that's awarded through Department of Human Services. So she asked me just to share with you some of the activities this grant is producing. And the reason this is different than our previous grant, is the previous grant was geared just for special education services at 916 and the other intermediate districts. So our federal setting for programs serve only students with disabilities, and what kind of innovative things we could do within those programs. This grant has expanded the opportunities where we can serve our member districts, which is really exciting. So I wanted to share a few things, what we're doing internally with the grant, and then a few things that are impacting our member districts in White Bear Lake. So we have 23 community partnerships supporting our programs. Couple of them that highlighted, one is Canvas Health, which is a mental health community provider, and they provide onsite clinical therapists. They're available to our students. So each person has a caseload. They are not our employees. We contract with them, but we provide the space for the students to access clinical services. We also created an elementary mental health classroom, we're actually two of them. They're both located at Carner Blue, and it's basically sort of like a day treatment program within a school. So we have a clinical therapist and a classroom teacher, a special education teacher, a behavior specialist worker from Canvas, and educational assistants from 916, all working together in a classroom, working on common goals, which are both mental health goals and academic and social emotional goals. So it's an integrated approach to education and mental health within a school setting. And we've been doing that since the first grants, was our third year, I believe. Another thing I just started this year relating to the grant, something we call a navigator. And we have a number of students that are on the waitlist, and while they're waiting, when a referral is made, you can check a box to engage a navigator to work with the family. This navigator can connect with the family with consent, with written consent, to share information about what services are available to them, whether it's through Canvas Health or through the county. So it's a way to provide some support to families and students while they're waiting to receive services from 916. And that's just new this year, and we hope to continue that. Another important part of our Innovation Grant is our work around restorative practices. You heard me mention earlier, that's a big part of Project Return. We actually use restorative practices in all of our programs, and we contracted with a person to train people within our building, and that's really been an important part of how we are changing our practices around responding to behavior, responding to discipline. It's been really well-received. Now, things that are related to our member districts, and more specifically tonight, or to White Bear Lake, is we're able to provide some professional development directly to our member districts. So, for example, we provided some trauma-informed practice training to approximately 150 staff here in White Bear Lake in April. We provided some mental health participation in statewide conventions for school-based social workers and school psychologists. At those conferences, there was a training on something called C-Bits and Bounce Back, which is supported by another one of our grants. So trying to provide opportunities for not only our mental health staff to get training, but our member districts as well. Val had mentioned the standard response protocol and standard response, or standard reunification from the I Love You Guys, which was well-attended, two of those trainings this year. And then again, the Collaborative Intervention Network, which, there are 10 participants from White Bear Lake, psychologists and teachers participating in the SIN network, which is four times a year, no cost to our members for that. And then lastly, is the Center for Intensive Educated Preparation, CIBP, which is really an alternative licensure program for special education. So we are engaged currently, working on making an application to Pelsby to become a licensing institution, to offer to those special education teachers that have an ABS or an Academic Behavior Specialist License, which doesn't work well in our setting, because that's really geared towards mild, moderate students, and we need to have staff that have a standalone emotional behavioral license or license with autism. So this is a program where if you have an ABS license, you can enter into the program and earn, within one year, I believe, earn an EBD and ASD license. That's going to start, fingers crossed, it's approved by Pelsby in June, that that would start a year from June, we'd start taking applications to that program. It's important to note that this program is available to our member districts as well. So if you have teachers that are at ABS license and they want to get a standalone license, they would be able to participate in this program.
So I'll introduce this next slide. Last fall, we gathered the superintendents, we invited HR directors and directors of special education to come together and look for solutions to not only the workforce shortage that we were all experiencing at that time and predicting wouldn't end anytime soon, but also a response to supporting students on a waitlist or helping to think differently about solutions and/or current practices that would help to expedite referrals into our programs. And so what this slide really is showing is the culmination of the work that we did. It was through teamwork, was helping us along the way, gathering the information, met with our HR director, Dan, and myself throughout the fall and into the winter. And these are the short-term and long-term solutions that have been implemented, and some of the long-term solutions that are ongoing. So I'm not going to go through each of them because they're there for you to see, but I think Dan maybe will highlight a couple of the long-term solutions that are really, hopefully, going to make a difference for students.
Yeah, I'll highlight three of these, because the rest are more kind of HR-ish kind of things. But the first one is just a short-term solution, which is adjusting the intake process to prioritize students in need. So in the past, students were referred to us, and it was first-come, first-served basis, basically, by the date of referral. And so the directors of special education, we got together, said we have to think about this differently, because we have students that are waiting a long time that really need the service. So we started looking at how can we prioritize students that have a higher level of need, Fed Setting Four, IEP, move-ins to your districts, and so they would go up on the waitlist. So that was one thing we did in the beginning of the year. And then we engaged, just recently, are wrapping up a, what we call the Transition Improvement Work Group, and Director Lisa Orne was involved in that group with three other directors from our member districts. And the intent there was really to look at our transition process. One of the variables in creating waitlists is students come to us, and they remain with us for a number of years, and few transition back. Not all are going to transition back, and not all should. But we really need to look at how many students we can get to transition back appropriately to our member districts. And so this team worked together, I think we had five three-hour meetings, long meetings, a lot of time, but came up with some really good solutions. I think we have four solid recommendations that are going to come to Val, I think, next week, and then hopefully, we can begin to work in the implementation phase on the Transition Improvement Group. The second group is Core Secondary Programming Group. Similar process we're going to follow, it's going to be a little more long-term, because we're looking at, Corea is our largest program, and two of our K8 buildings funnel into Corea along with Self Campus, some of the students from Self Campus. And so everyone's kind of ending up at Corea. They do have physical capacity, but we're looking at what we can do differently around programming, staffing, just some unique ideas on how we can create different settings to have more students engage in our program at Corea. So that's going to start, hopefully, here in the next couple of weeks with the same kind of process that we implemented with the Transition Work Group.
And that completes our presentation, and we would love to answer any questions that you guys have. We thank you again so much for inviting us to come and share information about programs and services from 916.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Dr. R. Cant.
I was just curious if you don't, how many college credits your CTE, our CTE students are earning there?
Oh, that is a really great question. I don't know the answer right off the top of my head, but I'd be happy to get that intervention and get it back to Wayne as soon as possible. It's a great question.
Other questions? Miss Daniels.
Quickly just tell the board. What I've said before, you have a lot of, you have a lot of language.
Yeah, they do. Thanks, Kathleen. Yeah. Can I start by saying you guys do a really great job with your special education services? Kudos to Lisa and her team. It's phenomenal, the services that are provided in terms of special education in White Bear Lake.
Fed Setting Four is a separate site. Students that, all the students at that site are students with disabilities. So in typical independent district, you're going to have a level of service anywhere from being out of general at a short amount of time, up to 60% of the time. And that's typical in a typical school district, where we're in intermediate, where we create those Fed Setting Four programs. So most districts don't have their own separate site special education programs only. Districts can, but most use 916 as that part of their continuing service.
All right. Thank you so much for coming, and thank you to Kathleen for serving on the 916 board.
Thank you.
Great. We will move into item B2, which is the Elementary Specialist Review Update, and after Gillespie and guests.
Chair Ellison, members and board, I have some guests with me that I'll introduce. I have Dr. Laura Potter from the University of Minnesota Carey Institute, who will walk us through the specialist review that we have done. I have John Meineger, who's principal at the Tulsa International Elementary, and then Dan Schmidt, who's principal at North Star Elementary, who then will talk about the work that we've done since we've received results of the Elementary Specialist Review. So I will help with the slides here.
Okay.
All right. Well, Chair Ellison and members of the board, thank you so much for
Um, well, Chair Ellison and members of the board, thank you so much for, um, letting us come here today and talk about this subject. Uh, it's been really, uh, wonderful to work with the, the school district and just learn more about what's going on with the district, what are the strengths, what are the needs? Um, and that was our goal in evaluating White Bear Lake Cary's schools, elementary specialist scheduling and programming. Um, as Ellison introduced me, uh, uh, my name is Laura Potter and I'm the Associate Director of Evaluation Services at Cary. Um, a very long name, but Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement. Um, and my background is as a school psychologist working in schools as well as a researcher and evaluator. So I've been all over the place from ivory towered on the ground and just kind of seen, seen it all, I'd like to think. Um, and I'm not able to be joined today by my colleague Annie Hurt, um, but she did a lot of work on this and I just wanted to help her out and acknowledge her work on this project. Um, so, uh, we did a lot for, um, this work to really just inform the district about what are some of the best practices um, in the school district as well as outside the school district around elementary specialists. Um, I'm not gonna dive into each of these, but I will give you an overview of the methods that we used. Um, so first we reviewed the practices and specialist scheduling and programming. Um, but that started with the examination of peer-reviewed research, but unfortunately there's not that much out there. So we, we did what we could with what was out there. But also looked at best practice guidance from educational organizations like the American Institute for Research or AIR. Um, and a lot of our information came from expert interviews with school administrators as well as somebody who teaches master scheduling at the University of Minnesota. Um, we also conducted, compared our findings in that best practice review to a review of what was happening in, uh, White Bear Lake, uh, schools today. Um, conducted an elementary staff survey that was sent to all licensed elementary staff, um, as well as some elementary staff focus groups to really kind of get the narrative behind what we're finding in the survey. Um, with elementary, uh, principals, elementary district administrators and specialist teachers. And, um, as I'll, I'll share in a little bit, a lot of the, the findings in the review pointed towards we need to be really asking families, um, what, what they are looking for from their school district. So that's a broad overview. Um, and so I'll share just a few highlights from here, from what we heard from staff. This came from the surveys as well as the focus groups. Um, and some of the strengths that they highlighted were, um, really liking the amount of specialist class time, about 45 minutes. Um, generally reporting high levels of student engagement. And we really heard from the teachers that families are expressing appreciation for a lot of the specialist class offerings. Um, but there were definitely some areas for improvement. Um, a need for additional training and collaboration around master scheduling. One thing I learned through this process is master scheduling is very, very hard. And, um, just a lot of people do not get adequate training. And that's no one's fault, but it's a systemic issue that's very common in most school districts. So that was one of our big run of donations that we heard from staff. Uh, also a desire to add art to the specialist rotation and remove Chinese from our world language program. Not so much because there's anything wrong with teaching Chinese, but instead to focus on Spanish, to focus on a one-month bit. Um, there was also, uh, staff expressing a desire for specialists to be more valued, um, in a school system. We see this a lot, it's not, uh, unique to White Bear Lake. Um, but just wanting to make sure that specialist teachers are offering a specialty to students, they are experts in their field and they really don't want to just be seen as prep providers, people are providing a break to the other teachers. Um, most staff believe that students are not receiving enough movement throughout the day. Um, that wasn't necessarily them saying, oh, we need more gym class, but in general, there should be more movement. Um, as well as a desire for collaboration time between specialists and classroom teachers. That is very hard to do, but it's good that it's valued and finding opportunities for that is critical. Um, also a need to organize schedules to, when possible, allow for five-minute transition between classes to less than the number of specialist class sections per day and to allow for adequate specialist prep time that doesn't overlap with other duties. Um, so those were some of the main findings that we heard from staff. And, uh, I've already shared a, one of the main things that came out of that specialist or the best practices review was, like I said earlier, how hard it is to organize master schedules and the fact that more explicit trainings needed. But another element that came out of that is, uh, what I highlighted here, that student and family input and engagement should be one of the main priorities when making decisions about specialist offerings. What we learned is that there's no perfect system, but, uh, really using family and student feedback as your north star is the best way to go. So from there, um, we conducted a family survey. Um, this was, uh, distributed online to, um, elementary school parents in February of 2023. Um, in total, we had 873 parents and caregivers who responded across the nine elementary schools. We had a few, we had about 100 more folks, but they only responded to one or two questions. And it, it was, it was not substantial information, it was just what school do you go, does your child go to? So, um, 873, they provided responses to almost all the questions. Um, they, generally we saw representation from all schools and grade levels. Um, you'll note, you, um, you might not be able to see the, the details of what's on this slide, but some of the schools had lower response rates. Um, that is just, it happens in school districts when we're collecting some of these data. Um, and definitely should, could be something that's intended to, if, uh, the, the leaders of those schools are feeling like that's not representative of what happened at the school, um, we would encourage just re, re sending out that same survey or even considering the additional survey. Um, because we want to make sure that everybody's represented. But we were happy to see, um, over 20, uh, families from each building responding. Um, and from grade levels, very equal representation across those grade levels. In terms of demographics on the survey, um, those who responded about their children, uh, generally mirrored their demographics, generally mirrored demographics for this district students. Um, there's 71% of what Bear Lake students identify as white compared to, um, 79% of the respondents. So not quite exact, but some representation there. And then, um, very similar response rates from White Bear Lake students, 18% identify as, um, uh, qualified for special education services and 18.3% of the respondents had a student with, uh, special education. Um, I will also note that, uh, this was sent out very intentionally around conference time. Um, and it was also translated into Mami, Somali and Spanish, and we had several respondents in each of those languages. Um, the conference timing was so that people could support them. Um, any family who, who had any questions about the survey, especially if they needed additional translation services. Um, some highlights from the family survey, uh, the strengths were that over 84% of parents agree that their child enjoys going to specialist classes. So that's always wonderful to celebrate, people are liking, uh, going to their specialist classes. Um, general themes from the open-ended questions included that, uh, students are enjoying the classes, they like the variety of opportunities and there's a satisfaction with the scheduling rotation of the classes. Um, but some areas for improvement, um, just a broad question that was asked is, uh, I am satisfied that the specialist programming provided to my child and, uh, a rating of level of agreement. Um, there was really mixed satisfaction with this overall rating, um, with only 62% reporting that they agreed and 20% reporting that they disagreed. Um, and the other ones kind of being in the either agreed and is to, either agree nor disagree category. Um, and while that question alone doesn't point us towards what they would like to see differently, uh, done differently, the themes from the open-ended questions did. Um, there was a strong desire to add art to the specialist rotation, um, to increase movement time during the day in some way, shape or form, um, to increase communication between specialist teachers and families. Families want to know more about what's going on in specialist classes and to increase inclusion for students in special education classrooms, um, specifically students who are pulled out more often, um, kind of as we were hearing about earlier, the, the students who are not in their general education setting as often. Um, and so this was one question I just wanted to highlight from the survey. Um, and on, on the left there, you see the wording of the question. In addition to the state-required specialist content areas of music and physical education, please identify the top five specialist content areas you believe should be on a separate rotation as a required class at your child's school. I'm gonna let you look at the graph and I'll just point out that the reason that we asked the question this way is through a review. Um, we really discovered that, uh, what I learned is a phrase, uh, principals will know this, but a singleton, um, when scheduling makes scheduling very complex. So any, any, uh, course that is offered to just a small amount of students, um, really is much more challenging to schedule at the elementary level, much easier at the middle school level. But, so we were trying to focus on in this, um, what are you looking for, for the main rotation of, of specialists? Um, and so that's, so there, I know there are some questions about kind of why we framed it this way. Um, and we really were trying to find out what are you looking for, your students have access to on a regular basis as much as possible, knowing that it is much easier to kind of fit these into a schedule than some of those singleton, uh, courses. Um, so as you can see, art, um, rose to the top there in terms of people selecting it as one of their top five, as well as physical education. STEAM, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Art and Math. Um, so kind of that interdisciplinary approach, um, as well as music, world language and library, media and digital. Um, and then I'll just end with some of the key recommendations overall from our, our overarching project of the district. Recommendation to provide training on master scheduling to building administrators and coaches. Um, and this might be more like coaching side by side, um, to incorporate specialist teacher feedback when planning master schedules, making sure that the district and, um, other administrators are really hearing them and what they need. Um, where possible, reorganizing elementary master schedules to include, this is again, maybe not all of these are possible in one schedule, but these are the goal of six sections per day on a four-day rotation, five minutes of transition time between specialist classes, offering one block of protected time to specialist teachers prep. Again, maybe not possible every day or for everyone, but it's a goal. And then, um, providing opportunities for collaboration with classroom teachers. Um, again, the adding art to the specialist rotation was a very clear ask, as well as shifting world language programming to focus on Spanish. Uh, and I'll note that there was some dialogue in the open-ended responses as well as our focus groups about what should that focus look like? Should it, because there's a range from every, everywhere from exposure to immersion and just more of a dialogue around what, what does the community want for language exposure and language, uh, experiences in the district? Um, and then lastly, uh, the last two are, um, a need to identify opportunities to highlight the value that specialist teachers bring to each school. Um, this would be just one small thing, but even having a specialist teachers appreciation week, um, could, could definitely elevate their, uh, their role and try to celebrate it. As well as identifying opportunities to increase student movement throughout each day. Again, I know that, um, that could be through physical education, but it could also be brain breaks in the classroom, different opportunities that could happen without necessarily access to a full gym. So that is my thesis that I was, uh, planning to share and I know that that will lead directly into, um, my wonderful colleague.
Okay, what we did is, uh, was building principles. We also looked at the more in-depth report for the Cary, um, survey that was submitted, as well as we met with a group of individuals. And I'm just gonna talk about the dialogue that was done prior to the recommendations that you'll hear in a few minutes. It's called a data-driven dialogue, BDD for short. And it's kind of a nice process that we went through. Uh, you first kind of establish what your norms of collaboration are. And then you also kind of review the equity commitment that we have as a school district. But then you make sure that you have fair representation within the groups that really kind of understand what the data means within that report. And so we had specialist leads in viad, music, world language and media. And then we had administrative liaisons for those same areas. And then we had the teacher union president and then also our director of teaching and learning. And so it took time then to really focus on four different areas within that more in-depth report. And that was the consistency of best practice, the dedication of time, strengths and areas of improvement. And from that, then we really took the data and tried to think about the observations that we were seeing. Uh, what are the patterns or trends that we started to notice as we dove deeper into it? And then what other conclusions or inferences do we take from that? And after lengthy dialogue, we came up with the next phase and John will help us with that.
Thanks, Dan. So I think one of the things I would add to, uh, what Dan was talking about, what I appreciate about the group that we were talking about. Um, everyone came to the table with an open mind and a, a willingness to really look at this from a big picture, not just from their, their, um, discipline area, but also what's, what's best for kids. And I just, um, wanted to add that as a note, one of the reasons I'm proud to work here in White Bear Lake is the, the way that our, our professionals can really, um, transcend whatever content they teach to what's, what's good for kids and good, good for our community. Um, you know, so, you know, as we saw in, in the statements that Dr. Potter shared with us, you know, there's a strong support for, uh, the, uh, from the community for our specialists. They, they do value them, they see their kids' joy going there. Um, we're going to continue offering Spanish, um, uh, next year in, in all of our schools to some capacity. Um, we're gonna continue to look at best practices and scheduling as, uh, as was noted, specials, uh, this, the scheduling is a really complex, um, process, especially when you're talking about, uh, multiple schools with different sizes, different number of sections and traveling and efficiencies, um, as well as providing, you know, good content there. Um, there, there was a desire, we want to maintain some consistency across our buildings. Um, so trying to make sure that we're, we're not sort of a whole bunch of different schools with different things going on, uh, to be consistent there. Um, and then, you know, we, we saw, I think it was slide eight, was just the, the parent survey, they really talked about, um, all those things are important. And one of the things that our committee talked about on that graph, you know, there was a clear block of really important things and, um, we know art that did come out on the top of that. So some of the next steps, you know, our, our goal, you know, as we talked with that group and amongst the, the principals is to develop an internal understanding to build capacity so that we can prioritize, uh, think about the feasibility of, of the recommendations across our systems. Um, we're given a lot of information, a lot of good information, but we want to make sure that, that as we implement is the things that we can implement, that we're doing it right and we're doing it well. Um, so we're going to start next year by incorporating some additional art in some of our schools, um, where we have the, the capacity to bring that into a schedule. Um, there are some nuances there that we know as, um, like between, uh, you know, Lincoln and Bedness where, um, there's some opportunities where we might be able to include some of that in, in the programming there. Um, we're gonna continue to partner with our, uh, with Molly Lee in our elementary and media center. We know that, that STEAM and the media, media, um, center, um, our learning commons are an incredible opportunity that we can build on and also, um, bring, um, more good content to our students. Um, and then we're going to continue to look at our world language models, um, as mentioned, from, you know, our, our participation as it is now to, uh, immersion programs or other ideas that we can put out there. So we're really moving forward with some ideas, building that capacity internally. Um, and then, you know, over the next year, we'll show, you know, developing some, a, a good path forward following this, this information. With that, I guess I turn it over to Dr. Gillespie or we're open for questions.
Okay, great, thank you all. Uh, any questions for members of the board? Oh, Ms. Daniels.
Do you still have a partnership with the Center for the Arts? So, so people are still coming in or we're doing on, are moving in online or we saw there?
Well, Mr. Powell continues online.
Okay.
Yeah. That actually increased the exposure that our students were, were getting during the pandemic, so we continued that. But we're excited to think about how we can incorporate art, really for every single student for the 24 or 25 school year. Yeah.
Really strong endorsement by parents.
Yep. Good questions. Uh, Dr. Newmaster.
This is an additional comment on art because that's something White Bear was all the strong in, in the past. We got creative artists who were also teachers in our district. And when art was eliminated, a lot of times the parents picked it up. I know I've been on it, Otter, for six or seven years now, remember their PTA? And they have parents that make the commitment for the year to be, you know, uh, working with Mia and giving three or four lessons to each grade level every year. And I don't know how many, you guys could tell us, do other schools, did this, schools in the White Bear District participate in that program?
Did there, depending upon their capacity and resources.
Well, did Lincoln, I'm asking, was my kids went there and you were there? So they had a parent rep that trained at Mia and brought lessons.
Minneapolis Institute of the Arts, they would get kids from there and be trained in online.
They tried to keep the spirit alive.
Yeah, and then they'd go through the, the units and you'd have to have a real solid dependable core of parent volunteers and where to follow, start to finish.
Yeah, I have seen that because they really value art.
Right, exactly.
And I'm glad to see Mia, which, you know, I'm a, a fan and a participant. And I've had what forty five years of varying versions of media, many decades I was with the district. But when I started, they had eleven elementary schools and a media person everywhere. And then as the years went up and down, I think, when was it media became partly private time? Was that in the late nineties? I mean, we weren't at one point.
Right. And I think it might have been done as part of some budgetary decisions that needed to be made and kind of streamlined things. And to get it more established within that rotation. But you're right, there was a, there was a window of times.
Yeah, the first thirty years or so, I know they weren't prep time, they were just all of them now for everybody to sign in and it was open schedule. It kind of ended up with everybody coming on. But and the high schools and middle schools. But I'm glad to see things coming back and I was thrilled last week to see that there is forty eight million dollars dedicated to school life. In the state budget. That's in addition to anything we'd already put in the feedback. So I'm happy with the brand things. And I know each school, my other question was, as schools have different focuses. This one might be an ecology school, this one might be focusing on STEM or music or whatever. I know a lot of schools really like STEM and P D S have had major spaces and things like that over the years, but. I guess I'm asking you to as the. Elementary principals, is there in the future, do you think? Some schools will be more focused on a particular identity? Like I don't know, their outdoor prairie, whether. All kinds of outside things that I know others look at wetlands. I think North Star is a wonderful wetlands opportunity.
I'll think, I mean, I could take a stab at that because, you know, I work in that unique, but I think, you know, one of the things, one of the wonderful things about White Bear Lake is. It gets a little bit like our family, all of our kids are a little bit different. They come with unique personalities, perspectives. You know, lenses, views of the world. We all kind of come together as one, one organization. You know, I've always appreciated the flexibility in the school to sort of, you know, chase them over dreams and our family's dreams and our community's dreams, but yet still be. A solid part of the White Bear Lake area schools. So the answer to that is, I think, yes, we'll always, we'll always have, you know, great programs and new ideas emerging from our schools. At the same time, we're all going to, you know, be part of our white bear community, you know, bringing all of our kids forward.
Some of them have a location that lends itself to wetlands and prairie grass.
I think the challenge that we're looking at is, as Dr. Potter was saying, is like, what are the core elements in this special field that we want to really get solid? But we also noted within the survey as we, as we viewed it, due to the details of it, that. Parents and I believe also staff are looking for a diversified level of experiences too, that can go beyond that. And so that's where the challenge and the excitement is. So where do you, where can you take that apart and go?
That's one of the main reasons that we're going to do training around master scheduling together in the fall. So we really can look at. How do you answer that question across the system? What has to be similar and where are the areas that we can have nuance to make sure we're still being really efficient? With our resources, but that is the beauty of coming together and making sure that. Nine elementary schools have a similar experience and consistent experience, but are there areas that we can? Create opportunity for nuance for each community to. Have some sort of flexibility. Yep. Other questions? Ms. Thompson.
So I have a couple of questions, I guess. My first question is, we didn't get numbers on staff that provided in the survey. Do we have? Percentages of staff that actually filled it out?
Yes. Ask your next question.
Just because looking at the families that actually participated, it's quite. You know, it's not very good numbers. And I noticed it says that we emailed them in February. How long did they have to fill out the survey and was it sent one time? And then one and done, or did we please fill out the survey and remind them like what kind of system was used?
So I'll answer your first question first, now that I have it up. Two hundred and sixty eight staff responded. And it was pretty evenly split. I had, I said out the information about. This table that I'm looking at right now. It was primarily general education teachers, but quite a few specialist teachers as well as. Other teachers throughout the school. And across all the different elementary schools. And as for the touch points, what art guidance was, it came as practices generally when we're sending out a survey. People don't want to respond to us, they want to respond to their principal. And so from the principals, they were kind of prompted by. District leads to send multiple touch points, including during or connected to conference time. So there were definitely at each school, there were multiple touch points of trying to remind families that this is something that we really want to be back.
Because I, I mean, I look at the numbers and I'm just a little bit disheartened, especially to see our will only. Have two point six four percent of their. Entire, like that's all that responded to the survey. That says a lot to me about what were the inequities that may have prevented them from. Participating in the survey, higher population of students of color, of. Students who are economically challenged, so maybe they don't have internet at home, maybe their families aren't able to participate in the survey or answer the questions or. Like culturally responsiveness, how, how was the wording like, was it something that? Would cross cultural, you know, variances between different families or. Things of that nature. And then that just brings me to a question that was brought up when we decided that we were going to stop the great orchestra in our district. Many of the things were said that this survey was part of the reasons why, not the whole reason, but was one of the. Reasons that was mentioned a lot. And a lot of the emails we received from parents and family members was there was no specific question. Like they didn't think they were losing orchestra. They thought they were saying, well, what other things do you want? What is important in our school district? And that's where I see, you know, that we have art because. Art to me got number one, because that's probably the thing that parents don't see the most, like. Getting in our elementary schools is art because it is something that we have to. Contract out, like we've had Kyle and all that. I even remember from when my girls were in school, Kyle was art. Like that was how they got access to art. So I could see that being added in because families would be like, well, we want more art, like dedicated art time. In the schedule for our children. And that physical, you know, we want that STEM and then music, those are the top four. Now, I, I see that we have, you know, theater and orchestra and band and choir put down there, but. Was there a specific question? That made people feel that they were going to lose that program? Because when you look at the numbers of families that responded and then you look at like. Before COVID in twenty twenty, when that school year started, we had four hundred and six elementary students signed up for orchestra in our district. Those numbers dropped because of COVID, but they started to rise again this year. So what would next year have been? I feel like it would have gotten more popular as it had started to. If you look at the numbers pre-COVID. To the year of COVID, it had really grown a lot and then it went down because COVID. So I just wonder if there was a specific question that actually asked families in our district. If we can only have music. You know, was there something that was specifically pertaining to the orchestra program?
And I can say the answer to that is no, there was nothing that was either communicating. Like, hey, whatever you don't vote for here might be cut. That was not, because we didn't know going in what any kind of decisions. Might be made from from our perspective at Cary, we were just trying to to emphasize what we had seen in the. Literature review, which was let's focus on the core programming because. Especially, I didn't highlight this in what I was just sharing, but having traveling specialists was a big, a big challenge. And so an orchestra, traveling specialist, anybody who's teaching just those niche groups. It's, it doesn't mean that it's not important or valuable, but fitting it into the schedule in a way that is sustainable for that staff number to. Start their car in the winter, like lots of just small things adding up to big challenges. Made it some of those singletons less sustainable. And so that's where that question focused, but you're absolutely right. We did not ask explicitly. Do you want orchestra next year or not, or something off the line? So it's a very valid concern with the survey and I'm glad you're pointing it out. And it's something to maybe explore, asking in the future of just kind of what the future of of music education looks like this year.
Well, and we looked at the singleton part of it that Laura talked about earlier, knowing that we couldn't sustain that in scheduling. And so we didn't go in thinking that orchestra wasn't going to be a part of it. And so I hear absolutely what you're saying as well, but it was. Knowing now that we know, you can look back differently than what we started with. Because we can't sustain singletons in elementary and create an equitable schedule. It's, it's really hard actually at the secondary level as well, but. You know, most bigger schedules you can do it. Elementary are, are, they can talk better than I can. They've tried every single thing to try to make it equitable and it just. We can't do it.
So we just had like maybe one person that was doing orchestra for all our, like how many?
We had two, we had two people.
Yeah. Well, and I haven't really heard that perspective and I think that it'd be helpful for people in our community to just hear some more. Reasonings why. And I know budget is a big part of everything we do here and being able to. Make sure that, you know, stay in that budget line and it's just, I think it's important for them to be able to hear. Because I feel like they thought it was just like, oh, that survey didn't have, so we just, that was it. And and there are other reasons why it happened. So it's important to be able to have that shared, you know, and have that question. Since you're here and we're talking about it.
The other part, I think we always reflect on how we've reached out to our families. We did bring the survey and talked through the. Execution of it with our educational equity team, and that's why we actually extended. The window to make sure it was around parent teacher conferences so we could get more touch points. And so everything you're saying is really well received. And we'll constantly review, how do we make sure we get more of our families? The eight hundred and seventy three is a really small proportion of our families, but statistically for surveys, it's actually really good, which is always really hard to explain. When we're talking to our community and I know you know that from your research at.
It's just that I wish we could get like eighty percent of every school, like I mean, that would just be wonderful, but and I know that. It's just, you know, you see the numbers.
Yeah, yep. Thank you. Ms. Blood.
Was it in the survey, there's art, physical education, STEAM, so there's world language, library, theater, orchestra, band, choir. Is that missing any of the rotating specialist areas?
Right.
So there was a list of all of the rotating specialist areas, people who responded to.
Yep, and we purposely put all of our music that we offer in our system. Because we could have said we were going to offer. The principals, I say this in scheduling, but band, orchestra, and choir in in fifth grade or all through our elementary, we, that would be a huge. Impact on our budget. We, we don't have resources to do that now, but had that emerged, we wanted to see what came to the top really from our community as a value.
Is there also a list of the peer reviewed research that was?
Yeah, I, I'm going to lean on Allison for kind of how that could be shared out, but.
Yeah, we have a lit review that we can share.
Dr. Newmaster.
I've got one more question that goes back to the media. It's hard when parents look at a form and they're asked if they want more, but they have not. Because we've had four years of no library media program and even the three years before then, it was being slow and chock. So it's hard for parents to realize. And a lot of parents that wrote me said, well, don't we have great stuff now? Look at that room. And then they find out there's no program. So I think those that realize that definitely said, we want more, but I think a lot of people didn't realize any of that. Molly does a wonderful job curating for empty stools, but there is no library media program. As such. And it was nineteen ninety six, I believe, the state quit requiring one media specialist librarian for seven hundred and fifty kids. Until that time, that was a state mandate. And after that, then it was. Easy for it. Or whatever, a cut that you can do. And so I think the difference now is that they've got actually dedicated funding. It's the first time since ninety six. And we look at our kids and we look at equity through a different lens. And we will get our minority kids, and I was disappointed too, on how few responses. It doesn't represent the needs of our marginalized kids because their parents didn't respond to them. Especially alone. So I think we have to put our extra strong glasses on and look at it. When we think of this whole program.
So are there three opportunities to have specialists or four, you know, we need four, or, I mean, what do we have now? Three, we have language, diet.
Music.
So. Really, we couldn't have five. I mean, because you have so many requirements, right? I mean, there's so many things that have to be taught over the days. You have to figure out.
Yes, that's, that's part of the complexity of it is taking the recommendations and then, you know, as we move forward, find out, you know, what can we do well? And how, you know, what makes sense in the system. There, there's a lot of of things to sort of think through. The, you know, we can, you know, if we add one thing, the what might be the cost of another thing? If we add another rotation, does that? Does that automatically mean that we have less P E, that we hear, well, we want more? So those are the nuances that we need to. Sort of navigate through to say, okay, what is the the best that we can do for our kids and with our resources and then bring that forward.
Dr. Newmaster.
One more view from the past. From kids that were involved in music, mine were. The solution in the, in the. Late eighties and often the nineties was the zero hour for before school or after school. Because elementary band practice in the gym, that many years, there are a lot of years in the media center. So, I mean, and nowadays we think, is that equitable? How can the kids stay after school and get home? Well, they can do that. So they go to school pretty late, but how can they get there in the morning? So again, it's the effort it runs and how do you give access?
So I, I have elementary. Well, I'm down to one, down to one elementary kid. So I do have a little bit of reflection on this and. I'm glad that it was, the survey was sent out multiple times. I'm the chair of the school board and I kept forgetting to fill out the survey. My husband had to remind me. So I do think that there is an element of parents are really busy. And these things tend to slip through the cracks. So we, we did fill it out, just I just wanted to be clear about that, but. So there were multiple touch points where I do recall getting the survey. I also had two kids that did fifth grade orchestra. Last year and then the year before. And I, the scheduling. Part is really the big takeaway for me here. Because my, my son who did it last year also has an I M P. So he was being pulled out of class multiple times a week. And then being pulled for orchestra. And he was missing core instruction. And he liked orchestra. It was great. But having an I E P, that's another piece of equity that becomes difficult and problematic when it's these singletons. And so hearing you talk about the complexity of scheduling. I think is really a key thing that we need to, to pull away from this conversation here is that it's. It's nine elementary schools, it's multiple different types of communities. Different enrollments. I mean, it's, it's so complicated. I mean, this is why we changed the middle school schedule a couple of years ago is because the scheduling was so complicated. So I, I just want to pull that away too. And then I also want to address something that Dr. Newmaster said, you know, about. You know, the equity of the different programs, different buildings. At Matoska, the last year, two years, this year and last year, there's been a makerspace program available after school. You can only do it once. Which I think is, is great. Like I have a kid who would do it every single time. They bring in like piles of of stuff and they build. All kinds of fabulous things, but there is that opportunity. So how can we take that type of thing? Just like art with Kyle and there are parents who come in and do art at Matoska as well. So I think. This is a really good conversation and I really appreciate the the context of the survey to a deeper level because, yeah, when we first saw it, it's like that. That piece is telling, but it's not the whole story. So I appreciate that. I really appreciate the complexity of the scheduling and also I think it's exciting to think about. Piloting art. Next year and looking at the ways we can bring that into the community because the parents are asking for it. And then how can we look at? And then how can we look at the idea of language as exposure? That was a word I hadn't thought about before versus immersion. Because what we're doing right now is exposure, a lot of it, right? Like, so how can we explore those different avenues? So I I think that this is good and and really points at how complicated all of this is. It's not just us saying, well, I guess we're going to make a change. So I I appreciate all the work on it, but I do appreciate all the the questions from the board as well.
Oh, I just got one more thing. And it's not really a question or anything. Some of my professors would make us stay in class until we filled out the survey before we could leave. Maybe they could do that at like conferences. You can't leave the stuff. Like line up some laptops for them, the Chromebooks for them to sit down at. We had teachers who did that with conferences when my girls were little, like I need you as parents to fill this thing out for me. And and instead of sending it home, like fill this out about your child and send it back. It was before we start, you two, you know, my husband and I, you sit here and fill this out. And then they would take our daughter, you know, and they would talk to them for a little bit while we serve them. Whatever we.
Well, thank you all very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, and then we'll move into our last discussion item for the evening, the three review of fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty four preliminary budget. Mr. Walden Johnson.
Thank you, Charleston, members of the board. We'll get started. So this is a this budget cycle diagram we like to bring up every time we do a budget presentation because it just helps kind of put in the context, the time of the year, how things happen. It's an ongoing process that really we're working through multiple budgets at any given time. Right now, we're, you know, we're approaching June when we'll ask the board to approve the preliminary budget approval. But early earlier this year, you approved the projected budget approval. And after that, you projected the adjusted budget for the current year. So we're dealing multiple budgets and important to keep, I keep track of which one we're looking at. So this is, even though we're currently living in the adjusted budget for the fiscal year twenty three, what we're bringing to you today is the preliminary budget for twenty three, twenty four. It's the budget we'll start the school year with. And then as we go through the school year and our audit is complete, we know we'll have adjustments to make. And we'll do that next January, February. This slide we looked at earlier this winter. And as we went into the legislative session, which seems like a long time ago, because I guess it was. We I pointed out what the what Commissioner of Education, Commissioner Jet said to the legislators, and that's that Minnesota students deserve high quality academic instruction and social emotional supports. Our public schools must be provided with the necessary resources to meet these needs. We also pointed out that as we do with everything, we looked at, we we kept the equity commitment in the forefront to make sure we were making decisions based upon our equity commitment. We also reviewed at that time, the state that state funding has not kept pace with inflation. And as we look at the student formula, even after this legislative session, we'll have continued to lose ground to the rate of inflation, which is a bit mind boggling. But through twenty twenty two, our through this this year, twenty two, twenty three school year, our student funding is six thousand eight hundred sixty three dollars on the basic formula. If it had kept pace with the rate of inflation, it'd be eight thousand one hundred twenty six. And even though our legislature did some really good work, they did not keep pace with the rate of inflation even in this cycle. Our assumptions as we built the projected budget that you saw in what's it, February, ending March? We had certain assumptions that we had to use and we used that projected budget to help us with the decisions that we need to make in the spring or the following year. So the assumptions that we used were the governor's proposal of four percent and two percent on the formula. That was the lowest of the three branches of government, the House and the Senate both had proposals higher than that. And so we felt like if we went with the governor's proposal, that would be the most conservative of those proposals. And it's good we did. We also funded the special ed cross subsidy in that projected budget at three point eight million dollars. And this the omnibus bill that's sitting on the governor's desk now does include money for the cross subsidy. And then, of course, the enrollment assumptions that we made, which we also believe to be conservative. On May seventeenth, the House and the Senate approved the E twelve education omnibus bill, moved that on to the governor's desk where it is today. And they included significant money for education, two point two six four billion for fiscal years twenty four and fiscal year twenty five, and then three point two for fiscal year twenty six and fiscal year twenty seven. Our goal is to see as much of that on the basic aid formula as possible. And and we wish we would have seen more on the aid formula as opposed to men mandates. So the formula increase was four percent and two percent for fiscal years twenty four and then fiscal year twenty five. Formula is tied to the rate of inflation, but capped at a CPI of three percent. So this year, it's just ironic that the year in which they tied it to the rate of inflation, it's capped at half the rate of inflation. The special ed cross subsidy is increased to forty four percent. And then when we get to fiscal year twenty seven, it'll be increased to fifty percent. The EL cross subsidy is a smaller amount for us. While our EL students are an important part of our student population, it's a relatively smaller part compared to some other districts. And so while the eighty seven million dollars and a hundred seventy two million dollars, for us, that means a much smaller amount. But currently, we spend more on EL services than the state funds us for. So we have that cross subsidy in EL. It's it's not like our special ed cross subsidy, but it is, the relief is appreciated nonetheless. Unemployment insurance for hourly workers, this was a controversial consideration on the omnibus bill in that hourly employees for school districts now are not exempt from unemployment insurance in the summer, in the summer months. And so that is part of the omnibus bill. The bill funds it at a hundred thirty five million dollars. As long as those funds are available through July thirtieth to twenty seven. They may not last that long. It's there's a lot to figure out on the unemployment insurance and the state will be working, I hope, very hard on that because they made it effective this summer. So they have a next week. And we don't have many details on it. Special education unemployment insurance costs will begin in fiscal year twenty six. So our understanding is that for the special education, per paraeducators who would be able to collect unemployment in the summer, that there'd be funding available beginning in twenty five, twenty six school year. Additional seats were added for voluntary pre K and school readiness plus. We have a school readiness plus program with about seventy students in it. And this expands the opportunity. We're hoping that we'll be able to see additional programming in school readiness plus. But Mr. Mowers explained they're still looking for details in the in the early childhood world on how that's going to work. But it's considerable number of slots to be open, three thousand next year. And then in twenty five, that's going to increase to fifty two hundred additional spots. So it'll be over over nine thousand spots. On the school library aid, money was set aside for school library, forty five million in fiscal year twenty four, twenty and twenty five. Then it's increased for twenty six and twenty seven. So that's four years of aid in that area. So glad to see that. Student support personnel, some funds are put in that that would be for new positions, new student support positions. Many schools benefited from ESER funds for new positions for student support. Those funds are expiring. And so this may be a position where we or other districts are able to consider some of maintaining some of that support. And then paraprofessional orientation training. I think, you know, the state wants everyone to be like Wake Forest Lake. We already provide the requirement for paraprofessional training. And what the state is adding as a requirement is what we provide in Wake Forest Lake, eight hours of of paraprofessional training. And there are lots of other things that are included and lots of policies that are included. The summary that I have is ten pages long and a significant portion of that is policy. There's also funding for American Indian education. It will increase thirty six thousand dollars to our budget in that area. The REED Act is an important part of this legislation and in, but there's very little details on how money how money will be dispersed to school districts for that. Interesting is the district renewal of current voter approved operating referendum. So where the where districts have a voter approved operating referendum, school districts can renew or school boards can renew that one time before going back to the voters. Pupil transportation has been a real challenge for school districts, especially in the area of special education and homeless busing. And some money was was in included for transportation in those areas. There's some money for safety and cybersecurity. So there's just a lot of areas that are going to take a lot of unpacking over the next several weeks for us to figure out. But the significant elements we're we're able to identify and include in our budget. Okay, Andy will talk members.
So taking all of those categories that Tim went through, we took the initial estimates from the state and rolled those into our budget as they were available. Some of those items that he talked about, we don't have good numbers yet. You know, the data is like three days old in business days, so we're doing what we can for the budget. So first of all, I talked to talk about where our general funds come from. So this slide looks at our general fund revenue by source. You can see the vast majority of our funding comes from state sources. So that bottom number, state sources about fifty four percent. And then special ed is also a state source at eighteen percent. So nearly three quarters of our money comes from the state. The next highest is property taxes and long term facility maintenance is also a part of our property tax levy. So that includes our our operating referendum, our operating capital, and then lots of different sides that come through as property taxes. And then we have a small amount of federal sources for our title programming, our special ed programming. And then other that would be like student fees to participate in activities or athletics or admissions to attend a sporting event or donations. So in total, we have a hundred thirty five million dollars in our preliminary budget for next year. And then how do we spend our funds? So I'll look at this in two different ways. First, we're going to look by what we call object code. And you can see here, the very vast majority of our of our expenses go to salaries and benefits. So over three quarters of our of our budget goes there. I think it's seventy nine percent. Then we have purchase services at thirteen percent, and that includes transportation. That's a big part of that, our contracted transportation gets quoted there. And then a small amount going towards supplies and materials and then capital expenditures. And then other expenses rounding out our a hundred thirty three million dollar budget in the general fund. Another way to look at it is by program area or kind of by department. And so starting over on the right, we have our elementary and secondary education at about forty percent. So that's like a classroom teacher. Oh, I'm doing my own, sorry.
Still doing better than if I were.
Damn it, yes. Okay, so here, this is showing the expenditures by object code. So again, just quickly, salaries and benefits taking up the vast majority at seventy nine percent. Then you see the purchase services. Okay, now we'll advance this slide. So then we have the preliminary budget for expenditures by program area. So elementary and secondary regular education, so that's like a classroom teacher, an art teacher, a language arts teacher, et cetera. Vocational ed down at the BADA is just one percent. That's a career in tech program. And then special education is about twenty two percent of our budget, about almost twenty nine million dollars of our expenses. Instructional support services includes media. It includes our curriculum department and includes technology, all of those instructional supports. And then we have our pupil supports like our counselors, our social workers, our health services. That all gets quoted to that pupil support area. We have transportation, both in house and contracted transportation is about eight percent. And if you remember, that's the budget that took the largest hit last school year, two percent overall increase in transportation over the last year. And then sites and buildings, which is our custodial and maintenance departments and then long term facility where we have revenue equal to our expenses. Others things like dues and memberships, just miscellaneous expenses. Administration would be where we would code all of our building principals, our superintendent department, school board and assistant superintendents. And then the district support services would be primarily staff that you see housed at district center. So like the finance department or our human resources, communications, print shop, that those types of things. So then putting, whoop, yeah, gosh, putting everything into the numbers. So we we focus on the preliminary column shaded second from the right. You can see again, a hundred and thirty five million, six hundred thirty two thousand dollars of revenues for next year and a hundred and thirty three million dollars of expenses. So it puts us increasing our fund balance for the year by nearly two point six million. And so that has all of the budget adjustments that you've approved rolled into it. And then those estimates that we are aware of included in the revenue and some in the expenses. We always tend to focus on the unassigned fund balance. That's where the bulk of our operations occur. And that puts us at nine point three million or just seven percent. And you know, we have a fund balance target of eight percent. And so if we look forward just one more year, you can see if you look at the, we'll just look at the orange line. We're increasing our fund balance projected by about one point five million next year. And then if you look down again at the unassigned, that puts us at about eleven million dollars of fund balance. And it gets us back to the eight point one percent ending fund balance. So just over where our target is, which is a great thing. And you'll see it doesn't include nine hundred thousand dollars of budget reductions that we thought we were going to be doing based on the estimates that we had built into the original budget. So that's good news.
But it's an important reminder that this is preliminary and what we're starting our year with. And we'll have audit results from the current year. And then we'll know our enrollment and any other factors that come into play next fall that will adjust our budget next year. So we still have one more round of budget input before we get into making a decision on what that twenty four, twenty five budget will look like.
So then looking at the three other funds that we have within our school districts, our nutritional services fund. They I'm showing here in red, the revised budget for this current school year. We're going to bring that forward to the school board for approval in June to revise that nutrition services budget. They did the original revised budget this winter when, you know, coming off of COVID and free meals, they really didn't have a good idea of where they were going to end up. Again, like December and yeah, in December. And so the nutrition services department did a lot of work on their budget and would like to bring forward one more revision to get them to what they feel is a little bit more accurate ending fund balance for the year. So they're projecting to end this current school year, twenty two, twenty three, at a twenty eight point two percent fund balance. And then next school year, meals are free for kids. And so we're getting again into another unknown in the nutrition services department. We don't know exactly what the reimbursement rate is going to be for meals. We don't know how many kids are going to participate. So that's loaded with lots of assumptions that we know are going to be wrong. So we'll be looking at that very, very closely throughout the school year. But that does put them with with their current estimates at ending fund balance of one point two million or nineteen point four percent. It's a very healthy fund balance right now. COVID was actually, it it did well for the nutrition services fund financially. That reimbursement rate from the feds during COVID, when the feds funded free meals was really beneficial in that nutrition services fund. Moving on to new community services, you can see they're projected to be about flat for next school year. Seeing some good growth in the revenues and seeing some corresponding, corresponding expenses. But ending the school year at about six point five percent fund balance in community services. And then debt service fund, that's where all of our bond payments come from, which again is what we think of as like our mortgage. Just like we have a mortgage at home for our home, we have bond payments for all of the school buildings and the renovations that we're making. So the revenues that come in are are simply calculated by the state at a hundred five percent of our total payments for the school year. So we're going to bring in about 28 million, spend about 27 million on all of our debt payments and ending that fund balance at about 18%. That's all driven by the Department of Education. We don't have any say over that. We submit to them what our, our payment schedule looks like. And then they do the complicated calculations behind the scenes to get us what our revenue will be. So that's where we're at. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for?
This is not my forte. I'm very happy it's your, it's your jam. And after eight years, I just thought of this. As we look at this target of ending fund balance, that we've got a goal, but we have all these mandated areas, pots of money. How do we decide which part of money, is it the percent from it? You know, how do we get that fund balance from all the different kitty bags from nutritional to instructional to whatever?
Yeah. So a couple of things, are you talking, are you talking more about like how we categorize the expenses or those ending fund balances?
12% or whatever the year is.
Yep.
And we've taken money from our massive pile of cash.
Yep, yep.
And put it in there. But how do we figure the percents of what goes in there?
Right. So if you look at the slide that I have up there, towards the bottom, you have all of our ending fund balances. And so those are, are just some of the required set of sides that we have. We have several set of sides where we have money coming in that has to be spent on certain things that we get money in and we spend that exact, exact same amount. So no, I'm talking more like safe schools. So a funding stream that's available for counselors, but it can also be available for programming your doors, for security purposes and that type of thing. There's lots of buckets of money that we get in, dedicated money. And so it's reading a lot of state statute to figure out what's allowable. And then working with teams to figure out, okay, what's the right expense that we code there? Some of it is, you know, as we've been going through budget reductions in the last couple of years, it's been really mindful spending and, and making sure we're quoting everything allowable to an expensive area such as operating capital or long-term facility maintenance. Really using those funding streams to our advantage to free up some money to the general fund. It's just plan for spending and, and making sure you're aware of what's going on, any changes and, and making sure you've got your coding correct there.
It's like scheduling, there's no.
Kinda, yeah, yeah, kinda.
Questions? Dr. Arcand?
I just have a quick question. We're looking at the nutritional services. So I guess I didn't look into it enough, but they're going to give us for free lunch. Then do we offer like additional products that students can purchase? Or is it just going to be, here's your offering, do you know what I mean? I, I was curious how that works. So if I wanted to, I wanted something else, can I go purchase it if I want to eat more? I don't, you know. Yeah.
Yeah, yes, you could purchase. So lots of senior, maybe juniors and seniors, well, maybe all high school kids who are athletes and have burning thousands and thousands of calories a day might buy a second entree. Right? And so we just had a conversation about this yesterday about how to handle those types of things. So that we, we don't, students get their free lunch, but then they can buy the additional one. And try to help families not get in negative spending on, you know, parents assuming the kids are getting free lunches, not knowing the student is buying an extra entree à la carte in addition to what's free. So yeah, we'll have to be careful with that because we could get into, families could get into negative spending very quickly.
One of the requirements of the state funding is that we maintain participation in a national school lunch program. So we'll still continue to offer all of those categories of food.
If all of our students were to eat breakfast and lunch next year, they'd be serving in the 2.3, 2.4 million meals next year. And so the reimbursement rate that Andy referenced, so we don't know what that reimbursement rate is. And granted, not all kids will eat two meals a day. But let's say it's, you know, let's say it's half of that. Multiply that by a few cents difference on the reimbursement rate and it's going to be, make a big difference. So it's usually not until August, I think, when we get that information, what the reimbursement is.
Because my other thought of this is like, well, this year or the last two years, we've seen a spike in food costs. All those, are they going to increase what they give us? Are we going to have to operate at a deficit because this is what it costs, but this is what they're giving us?
Exactly.
Make sure the lunch fits the money, the choice that everybody.
Yeah, we don't know. There's a lot with all of everything that's coming out of legislature right now. We, there's just too much that we don't know yet. It's still really early. But we have those concerns, absolutely.
You can get Tim off there, off the queue for us.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Do we know if it's going to be a flat rate for all districts or is it going to be gauged by what?
Yeah, we believe it's going to be a flat rate, like the same rate for the entire state.
It just doesn't.
So I just had a couple of questions, like when we talk about purchase services and like supplies and materials. And I just went through and kind of looked at where we're making cuts. Like we've seemed to kind of flatline most categories. It's kept it the same. Areas where we made cuts to me are the areas where I don't want to see cuts being made. Like, you know, $320,000 roughly to our elementary and secondary purchase services. What, what does that include? Like, is it purchase services that staff are getting to help them educate their students? Or what, what does that encompass? You know, is that like educational programming they can use online, there were different resources they can access?
Have to look at my notes again. So I want to make, I want to make sure I don't misspeak. In general, I would say we agree, our number one goal when we were looking at budget reductions is absolutely to keep the, the reductions out of the classroom. Last year, we reduced supply budgets by 15% and next year we, we reduced them by another 10%. You know, it's just that when so much of your expenses is related to salaries and benefits, it's really hard to find much bank free buck outside of that area. So when you said.
I'm just trying to figure out what purchase services all includes.
Oh, so not necessarily, I, yeah, we didn't necessarily reduce that much in elementary area for next school year. But purchase services, the largest part of our purchase services is going to be related to transportation. The other thing that's included in there is repair and maintenance. And so when we have our long-term facility maintenance funding, that's all repair work really, because you can only use that, those funds to repair what is at end of life within your buildings. So the majority of our long-term facility maintenance funding gets quoted there as well as a contracted service. Other things like utilities get coded there. That's in communication, so like phones, cell phones, that's a pretty small amount. And then sometimes we contract for some, well, like they talked about in our 916 presentation, those contracted services with 916 for those intermittent services, that gets quoted to that category as well.
Cause then like as I look through where we made, you know, budget cuts onto those category, that category and also supply and materials. And our biggest ones are, you know, elementary and secondary education. And then instructional support services. And I mean, the, the two largest are sites and buildings, which came in at 1.8 million. And then in our transportation, we cut, it looks like $632,000, but maybe cut isn't the right word.
So are you looking at like the?
I'm looking at like the total, you know, the detail that comes after the last slide.
So those aren't necessarily reductions. That's just a summary of our spending in each of those different categories.
Except projected for next year, like the difference between this year and what you're projecting for next year's spending.
Yep.
So the difference is, you know, I mean, that's a pretty fair amount. And most of the other category, it looks like it just stayed even. Like you didn't, like this year to next year is the same dollar amount.
So in general, so in general, if you see a flat this year to next year, particularly on the salaries, that would be a reduction because, you know, we have an assumption built in for salary settlements. And so if you see a flat, particularly in that area, that we would have a reduction in that area. Otherwise, you're just largely seeing what we would call cost of living increases in the budget areas.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out what's really, my main question was like, what all falls into purchase services category?
I'd love to look at it with you and delve into, yeah, it's without looking at it. I don't want to misspeak of like what's exactly going to be included.
Continues to be very complicated. And there's things that we just still don't know because the legislative session is ending and there are things that start next week that we don't have details on. So we'll get an update at the next board meeting, right, based on what you know.
Yeah, yeah, we'll bring it back through 12th and for approval that night.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. So that includes, that concludes our meeting. It's our last meeting before the end of the school year. So happy summer, everyone. Yep, see you at market fest. It's going to be, it's going to be great. Thank you to all of our staff and students for a great school year. So with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Chair Ellis, then I move to adjournment.
All right, motion by Dr. Arcand and a second, a second by Dr. Numaster. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Aye, pose same sign, we are adjourned.